Welcome to the Bothell City Council Meeting of Tuesday, January 8, 2019. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, all council members are here. Review meeting agenda approval, is there any changes to tonight's meeting agenda? See none. Review of public engagement opportunities. There we go, okay. Legislative session kickoff January 9 at UW-Bothell Cascadia Mobius Hall from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. Council Conversations, January 13, 2 to 3 p.m. at the Bothell Library. And then Volunteer Event, join the City of Bothell and Friends of North Creek Forest for the Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service in the North Creek Forest on January 21 from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Wow, that's a lot of time working in. Gloves, shovels, gear, and refreshments will be provided. You don't have to be there for the whole thing, I would imagine, though. No, yeah. Okay, and next on the agenda is the City Manager, Council Committee Reports. City Manager, you're good? Council? Wow, you guys want to get out early tonight. All right. Next is the visitor comment. Do you have a sign-up sheet? All right, each person addressing the council will give his or her name an audible tone of voice for the record, and unless the council grants further time, shall limit the address to three minutes. No person other than the council and the person having the floor will be permitted to enter into any discussion either directly or through a member of the council without the permission of the mayor. And one sign-up sheet is Sarah Agleram.
Good evening and thank you, and Happy New Year, Council. I'm here because I'm a member of the Bothell Library Advisory Board. As you know, I call it blab, we all do on the board. So I'm once again here to blab about blab and about some of the wonderful opportunities that the King County Library System affords everybody who lives in Bothell. Whether or not you live in Snohomish County or King County, you are still a member of the King County Library System, and you can have a card here and take advantage of all the wonderful things. It is the second or third largest circulating public library in the country, and we get to be part of it. And our own branch here in Bothell is always in the top three of the circulating branches of 42. It's Bellevue, Redmond, Bothell. We trade places, but we're always in the top three, and that speaks very well for their community. I just wanted to talk to you tonight about a couple of exciting programs that are coming up. One of them in particular, I talked about a couple months ago, which is called Meet Your Muslim Neighbor. And this is part three of a four-series production. It is sponsored by the Muslim Community Neighborhood Association, and it's a conversation that comes with the library. Now, this one is going to be on the last Thursday of January, so it's the 31st, the very last day of January, 7 o'clock at night till 8:30. It's a facilitated topic, which is, this time, women and race in Islam. And then there will be a facilitated conversation and dialogue afterwards, and I think we can all benefit from that type of activity, and I'm so proud that the library is sponsoring it. The other thing that they do, and a lot of people don't know this, is that every other Monday, or at least two Mondays a month, I think it's the second and fourth Monday of every month, Hope Link Employment Service Desk is at the library from 10:00 in the morning until noon on Mondays, every other Monday. Someone is there to help anyone who walks in the door find employment. And they don't do it just slipshod, oh, here's a list of people hiring. You're assessed through them, they'll work with you week after week on skills that you need, they'll help you with your resume, they'll help you with your interview skills, and help you find a job that really works for you. And I think this is just amazing, and it's free, so just walk through the door. The other thing that happens every Monday during the day is conversations in English for people where English is their second language, also studying for the tests that you're going to take when you become a citizen, and practice learning English as a second language. So there's three different kinds of levels that you can plug into as a person who this is an adopted country, or the language has not, you know, English language is not your first one. So we do all this in the name of it's good neighbors and the community. And again, as we all know, the deputy mayor hosts her conversations with the community at the library, or we host them anyway, so thank you. And it just, you'll hear from me probably at least one more time in the next few weeks.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wants to provide public comment? Except for the public hearings, those are later, so you can speak during those if you want to wait for that. Okay, moving on to the public hearing, AB 19-002, Public Hearing Regarding Adoption of Interim Zoning Ordinance relating to the small wireless deployment. And I believe we have Assistant City Manager? Okay. I'm officially opening the public hearing.
All right, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of the City Council. I'm just the opening act for outside counsel Scott Snyder behind me today, who's going to be briefing you on this particular topic. Just wanted to give you a little bit of information before he starts. The items for counsel on this topic coming up in the next six months or so, as you see, this is an interim ordinance, so it lasts for six months. We'll be coming back to you with a permanent ordinance with some additional updates and corrections to this. This is to comply with the deadline coming up next week, to make sure we have something in place for that. But you'll hear this again and again, this is an interim ordinance, so we'll be updating it and bringing back the permanent ordinance later. You'll also see the development of some aesthetic standards happening between now and April. So you will see this a couple more times, but just wanted to give you a preview that you'll see this item three times in the next six months. So it will look familiar. Simultaneously, the reason that I've been brought in on this, this is a very legal-heavy topic, and so I'd like to extend my sincere thanks to the city attorney and the deputy city attorney for their work on this, very, very detail-oriented work on this. And then also to the community development and public work departments, because this impacts both the management of the right-of-way and our design standards and land use. So there is an internal process underway, and we are developing a permit application and a franchise application to go with these. So you'll have, everyone will be ready for these to show up. The interim ordinance is just the legal approval from council to start that. But so you know, we've got a lot of planning underway as well in the organization to get ready for this, too. You'll also see in your folders, we have received comments from three carriers and also a letter expressing no comments from Snowpud. So those are all in your folders. We will, or rather, our outside counsel Snyder will be addressing some of those comments and some ways to address those, either in this or the permanent ordinance. But there is one change that is already in your draft that reflects some of those comments. So the carriers in particular were reacting to an earlier draft that didn't include the section amending 12.11.170. So that's already in your draft, we already made that update to be responsive. So just wanted to give you a heads-up on that, that we have read those through and are working to respond to those that we can. I think that's it from me, so if there's anything else, I will.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Counsel, Scott Snyder, an attorney with Ogden Murphy-Walls from Seattle. Let's start with the why. Mobile devices use a lot of data, and a new generation of users use them in ways that go way beyond phones. There's been an exponential growth, over 150,000% growth in the last five years, and that this graph continues to head up. If you think about it, every time someone with kids downloads a video for the backseat of the car, when you see a Verizon ad, Netflix for life, 80% of the data that's processed is and relates to video. Over 70% of consumers no longer rely on cellphones, not landlines. The industry is seeking to densify its network. That is, not use additional macro towers, large-scale towers, but rather use small wireless or small-cell devices located between the towers to provide additional density of signal. If you've ever been in a situation where you have bars on your phone but you can't download a document, that's the sort of thing that these are intended to deal with. The small-cell devices or small wireless are much more human-scale, and they're typically, at least initially, going to be deployed in the public right-of-way. The macro cells or cell towers of over 100 to 150 feet, the use of the small wireless devices allows the systems that the carriers have to carry more data without increasing the number of those large-scale towers. They come and are deployed on a variety of devices. The most typical, probably because it's going to be the most cheap source, are deployments on existing utility poles. As we'll discuss, the FCC, which regulates or promote, more properly promotes interstate commerce, have identified the existing utility poles as a prime resource for the deployment of these devices. As you can see, they're typically shown with antenna at the top of the pole. There are conduit for both power and fiber-optic cable running the length of the pole, and then a radio box or equipment box at the lower level in this case. Power disconnects are required but typically aren't bulky. Another resource are existing gooseneck lighting poles. These are typically seen on arterial or high-volume city roadways. They can also be deployed within and atop decorative lighting standards. This is a larger-scale device, you have very, your downtown streetscape, you have a considerable investment in it, and as we'll discuss, the ordinance provides for specific scrutiny of your downtown area as a design zone. So what happened? I have been working with your staff, and thanks again to your legal, public works, and planning department for the work they have done. We were anticipating being ready for the legislative session this year, and in midsummer, at just about the time we thought we were getting somewhere with our redraft, the FCC stepped into the arena. Their order, which is effective, which was effective and the requirements effective on January 14, that's why I'm here, and that's why you have an interim ordinance in front of you, make significant changes in the playing field. To a certain extent, city authority has been preempted, and in others, the FCC created presumptively reasonable timeframes for review of the permitting process. In a nutshell, this is about ensuring that cities promptly respond to requests to deploy small-cell deployments in their community. In the past, under state law, the cities had 120 days to consider franchises, and then an unspecified period of time to deal with things like right-of-way use permits, any zoning issues, concealment. According to the FCC, in some states, this led to delays of many months. Part of the FCC's charter, which it takes very seriously, is the promotion of interstate commerce. And make no mistake, they're a captive federal agency that takes its role seriously, particularly under the current administration. So these are rules that are intended to take down barriers to the deployment of small cells, small wireless devices. They also severely restrict your traditional role as a steward of the public right-of-way. The definition of small cell under the federal regulations has changed significantly as well. Under state law, the definition of small cell, what was permitted and exempt from SEPA, focused on the size of the equipment box at 17 cubic feet. The federal definition, lower right-hand corner, uses 28 cubic feet. That refers, though, to all that conduit, wiring, the shut-off switch, and the other devices except for the antennas that are associated with the deployment. The FCC regulation also addresses height, as you can see, under subsection 1. The order is applicable to the larger-scale facilities as well, in the sense that it changes the former legal standard that's incorporated in your ordinances for review of macro facilities, large-scale facilities, by requiring that, rather than, well, in the past, our federal judicial circuit, the Ninth Circuit, allowed cities to require the providers to show that they were curing a significant gap in coverage before installing a new installation, and that it was the minimum necessary to close that gap. The rules have changed. Now, cities may not materially inhibit the, by your regulations, materially inhibit the deployment of the devices. Cities are permitted to enact aesthetic requirements. As a body that enacts land use regulations, you may have heard of the state case Anderson versus Issaquah, and these requirements are very similar to what the FCC has enacted. Aesthetic requirements must be reasonable, they can be no more burdensome than those that are applied to others who use the public right-of-way for infrastructure. They have to be objective, and they have to be published in advance. It's no more of, I'll know it when I see it, or, you know, it has to be generally compatible. You need precise standards, and if you've glanced or taken, I'm sure, a deeper dive into the interim ordinance, you know we've got at Section 1211170, eight and a half pages of standards for different kinds of devices, from those light poles through wooden poles. I mentioned that the old standard has been changed, and the city must use the materially-inhibit standard. That's how your ordinances would be reviewed by a federal court. Another important change, particularly for cities that own substantial infrastructure, is that the order ignores the traditional role that cities play as property owners, and differentiating that from your role as a regulatory agency. That proprietary regulatory distinction's been done away with by the order. Now, what does that mean in practice? It means that cities can only charge for attachments to city structures, the cost of processing the permit. You can no longer get leases. Cities like San Francisco were deriving $5,000 per pole for revenue, and that may have in large part driven the FCC's decision. The order looks at the costs of deployment imposed by city regulations, and repeatedly refers to it as a bar or an effective limitation of the carrier's rights. The draft ordinance before you, as Ms. Brazidis noted, is an interim ordinance. It will come back to you. One thing, just, I've been doing this a long time, I have never been involved in an issue that continues to evolve. As we'll discuss in a minute in the letter that you receive from Ms. Allen on behalf of Verizon, she asks you to make an amendment to delete two provisions, they're single sentences, that require, limit pole attachments to a 20-inch standoff. We'd used that in the past, worked with the carriers, that provision was enacted in a variety of jurisdictions. Recently, however, well, the evolvement of technology. As the carriers prepare for the 5G deployment or beginning to purchase equipment, they're finding that the equipment that they're using, whether it's canister antennas or other devices, don't fit within that limit. I'll note this now, and happy to answer questions about it if you counsel wants to react to Ms. Allen's request by deleting those provisions. They're 1211170, I believe it's A1 and B8. They'll do no harm, this matter will come back to you. Those are the references to 20-inch standoffs. Again, these aesthetic standards will be reviewed with your planning commission, we'll get additional public comment, and come back to you with them. Traditionally, the Washington courts have deferred to city councils as the stewards of the public right-of-way, given enormous deference to your decision-making authority. Franchises are a form of contract, and again, what city councils have said have had enormous, got an enormous deference. The FCC's order doesn't necessarily attack that deference, but what it does do is set a very tight timeframe on review, and we'll talk about the 16-90-day coverage in a sec. But that's going to require a couple things. One, that you make, use administrative processes. This is not an area for land use controls, and frankly, that's consistent with the GMA, which specifically excludes right-of-way use permits from the Land Use Petition Act process and review. That administrative format for reviewing the permits is going to need to run in parallel with council review of the franchise in a consolidated review process. All portions from the permits through the franchise have to be accomplished within the 60- to 90-day review periods. As I mentioned, these presumptive safe harbors are, were established by the FCC, and they differ from another federal regulation known as 6409A, in that 6409A, if you don't act within the 60 days provided, the permit's deemed approved. Here, the safe harbors create a timeframe in which the city is presumptively must act. If you don't act, you can be taken to federal court in an injunction proceeding, and as we'll discuss, the ordinance identifies several areas where additional scrutiny may be required. It's not an automatic loser, but the presumption is strongly against you. For that reason, the ordinance calls out four categories for additional scrutiny. Undergrounded areas, if you're a citizen and you and your neighborhood just paid underground facilities in your neighborhood, you may not like the idea that poles are coming back. So finding the least intrusive means, something that's aesthetically pleasing, whether it be light poles, other shrouded or partially concealed devices are a possibility. New poles, and there's quite a bit of overlap, but situations where there's not an existing utility pole. Design districts, in your case, this is contemporaneous in the ordinance with your downtown decorative streetlight district. I've used you as an example in other communities when talking about, you're in federal court, and you took three more weeks to consider the permit. I'd say that your $3 million investment in your downtown streetscape should be something that a federal judge pays attention to, and we've, the ordinance is designed to provide additional scrutiny there. Finally, SEPA shorelines and critical areas, the city is a, you're an agent of the state in that, and you exercise your powers in conjunction with and under the authority of state law. So the city will, under the ordinance, follow those state procedures. If the carriers feel that they've got a problem, we'll let Mr. Ferguson and the State of Washington defend that lawsuit. The shot clocks, I've mentioned them repeatedly, that, again, these are presumptive safe harbors. They cover any approval that you would give to permit the deployment of the facility. What that prohibits is stacking. That is, well, first you get a franchise, then you get a conditional use permit, then you get a right-of-way use permit. As you'll see when we talk about the structure of the ordinance, this will be a consolidated permit process. The new shot clocks, there are two, 60 days to review applications to co-locate on an existing structure. In the past, co-location required that you be, pardon me, that the wireless company be deploying on a structure that had been built as a tower for other uses. In this case, the FCC's redefined existing structure to be any existing structure, whether it's a building or a utility pole. So if they want to put a wireless facility on anything that's there, the city has 60 days to consider that application. The city has 90 days to review an application that would require the erection of a new structure to, as the antenna site. As a practical matter, initially, small-cell companies, small wireless companies that come in will be looking for franchises. I'd suggest that it's going to be the rare instance where a new company comes to your town and doesn't want to, the right to locate on our erect new structures. Where this will come into play is existing franchisees that have the right to be in your right-of-way and want to use small wireless devices to erect on existing structures, that will go a lot quicker, that'll be a 60-day. So once the franchise is in place, erection on permits for new, erection on existing structures has a 90-day time, pardon me, a 60-day timeframe. Easy for me to say this afternoon. The structure of the ordinance is in parallel. As noted, the franchising authority is the city councils, and you have 60 to 90 days to consider that. As a practical matter, I think what this is going to mean is that the city will end up developing template ordinances, take more of a take-it-or-leave-it approach. In my experience, most of that 60 days or 90 days, the old, under the old state law, 120 days, was taken up with shipping documents to corporate counsel in New York for review. You're probably aware that the city council must hear a franchise application at two council meetings, and the franchise has to be published. Those all add, or take away from the time that you have to consider it. Practically, franchises will become, you know, your way or the highway in those instances. The other side of the equation here are the administrative permits to actually install the facilities in the right-of-way. This will be as staff administrative review process, not a land use process, issued to small-cell permits. There was a provision for variations of design to handle deviations, which I'll address here again in a minute. There'll be specific requirements for development of concealment strategies, techniques, or plans for new poles and in your downtown streetlight district. And environmental review as appropriate. Most small-cell facilities are, at present, may be exempt under the state SEPA provisions. Everything will come together for approval or denial. The staff approvals will be contingent on your approval of the franchise, but again, as a practical matter, these will all need to be handled in the same timeframe. If I could take just a second, I'd like to, I know you've If I could take just a second, I'd like to, I know you've probably reviewed the questions or comments from the carriers. Wanted to note, I've talked about them with staff. We've seen many of the same comments and have reacted in two ways. As I noted, the changes Ms. Allen requested on behalf of Verizon would do no harm if you want to grant it. The other way to go would be to review that request as a part of the interim zoning process. The other change that was incorporated that Ms. Brazidis mentioned, I thought we would have to do it by motion, but your legal staff was smart enough to have already included it, is a provision for staff review to grant minor deviations in three specific categories. The first is when the concealment strategy or requirement conflicts with the technical operation of the device. Some things just won't work if they're behind a screening measure. So having a technical out, cities are prohibited, or, let me just briefly digress and talk about the size of the policy box that you and your staff will work in. First, cities can't dictate technology choices, so that's up to the carriers. Secondly, the city is prohibited from regulating radio frequency emissions. This makes, while there's a lot of debate today regarding the impact of radio frequency on health, as a lawyer, I can say that you're prohibited from considering it. As a consumer who grew up watching television and being told that nine out of 10 doctors smoked palm oil cigarettes, I appreciate that health, that health consequences of decisions may not show up for years, but what I, again, what I can say as a lawyer is, it's the FCC has taken that mantle themselves. They're the only ones who can regulate that specific aspect. I was mentioning the deviation authority. We've come back to it. So because of the technological provision, the other two exemptions are very common sense requirements. If the pole owner, Snohomish County PUD, the city, or the PSE have requirements that conflict with the ordinance, the staff member can take that into account when granting a deviation. And the last category, the National Electrical and Safety Code provides for a series of requirements. I meant that standoff from the pole that you may have noticed, the equipment has to standoff six inches, is a relic of linemen climbing poles with belts. So even though most large utilities use cherry picker trucks, just in the event they need to climb them, everything has to standoff from the pole six inches. So we've built in deviation authority. The other reason that's important, as I mentioned, this is a very, it's an evolving technological field. The companies are in the process of designing and purchasing equipment for the 5G deployment that will come in a couple of years. 4G is what's being deployed at the present time. Things will change and the city will need to be flexible. I think you'd agree, we don't want, you would not want an ordinance that you had to address every couple of months. The other thing too, is to remember that particularly with utility poles, each pole is a unique environment. Each pole is different, whether it's wind loading or the height of the pole. There may be situations in which deviation authority needs to be granted and we built that in to the ordinance. I mentioned that part of this process is after staff review or in the process of staff review, we developed a draft. Before that, when that draft went out to you, it also went to the industry for comment. They're aware that this is an interim ordinance. I, I attend a lot of these meetings. I recognize a number of the representatives from the industry in the audience and hopefully you'll hear from them. Many of your questions would be best addressed to them about the technical aspects. But I wanted you to know that particularly the lengthy comments have, we've gone through them in detail. They tend to fall into four different categories. We retained in the drafting process, the majority of your existing macro facility provisions. That's subject of a prior policy debate, not really to do with small cell. We didn't make any changes. But hey, the ordinances are up and a number of the carriers made comments about things they'd like to see changed in portions of the ordinance that staff and I did not address. It was suggested that we incorporate the federal shot clocks and other language specific to the order. Rather than put it into your ordinance, it's been incorporated by, either by reference or through staff training for use as the ordinance is administered. Why not put it in the ordinance? Short answer is because there are four federal lawsuits pending and depending on how those shake out provisions, the order may change. We're trying to have an ordinance that, again, is relatively easy to administer and incorporates no more than is required to get the job done. And that means focusing on your administrative permitting process and on the aesthetic standards. The federal law will be what it will be and that has purposefully not been incorporated. The other reason that the shot clocks aren't in there is if you, one of the commentators suggested that we put the 60 and 90-day limits in as hard limits in the ordinance. As a lawyer, I'm aware and your counsel are too, that the city could potentially defend delay if it was appropriate in light of the facts. If your ordinance says you have to do something in 60 days, even though it may be more complicated than it seems, you're done when you end up in federal court because you violated your own ordinance. My recommendation to you is to honor, as the ordinance says, those shot clocks whenever you possibly can, but not incorporate that in case you, you know, suppose it takes 10 more days to get a good design on the light pole for your downtown streetlight district. Again, I think you have a case that a federal judge would pay attention to. A number of the comments address technical and volumetric issues. The 20-inch standoff is one. Again, that's one you could honor their request and delete. 1211-07, or 170A1 and B8 without doing any damage to things. Some of the others I suggest that are more appropriately put forward for the interim process. We can get more citizen comment. The planning commission can weigh in. We can consider those because they're part of a more complex aesthetic standards. And as I've noted, we've provided relief by having a provision in the ordinance that allows staff to grant minor deviations. And finally, a lot of them are style, whether something's redundant or, you know, you could say it better or different. I'd suggest, you know, what we need to do is to get an interim ordinance in place so you have a structure to comply with the federal order. A lot of these things we can work out with the industry and the public's input before the planning commission and the city council. Well, it key, key concepts to wind up here, and I'm sure you're glad I'm winding up. We're incorporating the federal shot clocks and safe harbor by reference. As noted, not as hard limits, but as we'll do our best to comply with them. It creates a consolidated review process. It treats small wireless in the right-of-way like other utilities. In other words, these aren't land use decisions, but we'll treat them the same way we do PSE, Snow Bud, and other users of your right-of-way. And it contains extensive small wireless aesthetic design and concealment standards that our firm, in working with over a dozen cities over the past year, they started at a page, we're now at nine, and probably as time goes on, they'll get longer. But again, think Anderson versus Issa Quah, you need specific standards to enforce. We've revised the code to incorporate the federal standard of effective prohibition. I'd be happy to answer questions about the code. I'd note that hopefully you'll hear from industry representatives and some of your questions, I may defer to them. They know their technology better than I do.
All right, thank you. We typically take the public comments first and then we'll circle back to council questions.
Thank you for the direction.
You have the problem, thank you. First is Devendra Maharaj.
Hello. My name is Devendra Maharaj with Verizon Wireless, office located in Bellevue. Good evening, mayor, city council, city staff. Thank you for your support of small wireless facilities. Only concern, like Mr. Snyder said, is the 20-inch standoff, which would not accommodate our 4G and 5G solutions. This has already been expressed and we look forward to addressing that with the permanent ordinance or with the suggestions Mr. Snyder has given. Verizon is excited for the interim ordinance and we thank you so much for moving quickly on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Carol Tagayan.
Tagayan. Tagayan also. Good evening, I'm Carol Tagayan. I'm representing, I work for AT&amp;T in Redmond and I live in Woodinville. I don't know if you need my exact address, but I'm here on behalf of AT&amp;T regarding your interim ordinance and just give you some background information. Scott did a great job of covering, but just to add a little bit more details behind what's going on, on from the industry side. AT&amp;T has been providing communication services for over 100 years, 140 years. And I, you may know that Bothell actually plays a big role in our wireless work that we do because we have a couple thousand employees here in, in the city, performing different levels of work from network engineering to customer service. They've been here for quite some time. Wireless technology has become very much ingrained in our lifestyles and for most consumers. Using your mobile device is really an important part of our lives every day for most people, me included. Since the first iPhone came out in 2007 and the actual app community started to develop, our wireless data usage on AT&amp;T's network has been measured at increasing 360,000%. So it goes up every year, so that's why some slides reflect different numbers, but that's the 2018 number. As you know, smartphones have proliferated and that's a big part of what's going on with the data. And numbers out there are saying that at least 56% of Americans have used a wireless device to access the internet. So a lot of people using these devices and not just when you're away from home. A lot more people are using them in their home. Nationally, more than 50% of homes are wireless only. And the ones who still have a wireline phone really don't use them because it's just too convenient to use a wireless device that you're carrying around in your pocket. So residential, because of that, residential communities are needing more capacity for wireless service and especially in their need to access 911 because they don't have another option. And we know that wireless phones play a critical role in emergencies and helping people to communicate with first responders. So in addition, we have the business side of things. Businesses also are relying, relying on their wireless devices to stay competitive and to stay in the know with what's going on. So it's for reasons like this that AT&amp;T comes here tonight and that we support the work that you're doing around your wireless code, that we want to make sure that we have opportunities to grow our network and keep up with the capacity needs. And we will be here as part of the process for tonight as well as as you go forward to your permanent ordinance. So thank you all very much for your work.
Thank you. Next is Gregory Bush.
Good evening. My name is Gregory Bush. I'm with Wireless Policy Group, but I'm here tonight representing AT&amp;T. I live just down the street in Kenmore, so it's nice to drop by. So as Mr. Snyder already mentioned and Verizon already said, we've provided a comment letter outlining a few concerns and some changed language and that'll be the same going forward. But I'd like to highlight that AT&amp;T does agree with Verizon that the 20-inch standoff standard is, it's a concern for us. It's not something AT&amp;T has seen in this market before and it's, it's something that stands out to us. So we'd like, ask for extra concern on that one. And the other changes, suggested changes are included in our red lines, which we submitted last Friday. We plan to work through further suggestions as the ordinance goes forward to a permanent, permanent ordinance over the next six months. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. That's the end of the sign-up sheet. Does anybody else want to give public testimony for this hearing? Go once, twice? Okay. All right, counsel, is there any questions from counsel? Devin Mayer?
Thank you for the presentation. I was, I'm curious about a couple of things. When you talked about the ability for existing structures to have the small, small cell wireless devices on them, I assume that with the permission of the building owner is also part of that. I don't know anymore. So I'm particularly concerned when it comes to historic buildings and how that plays There's two categories. There's the registered and unregistered historic buildings, but I wondered if we'll be looking into that at all with the, with the final ordinance.
Yeah, that's a great question. Your planner, Mr. Kaderman, raised that issue earlier with me, early in the process with me and sort of two answers. First, the city regulates or is limited in its regulation of the cell providers, but not in the owners of structures. So all of your standard zoning laws apply to the owner of a building. As you note, that individual would have to lease the space. So your ability to regulate in a historic district is unimpaired. The other reality, and I defer to representatives from the industry if they'd like to address this, is that one of the reasons these devices are erected on utility poles is they have a 360-degree radius. If you put them on the side of a building or on a roof, they don't necessarily work in the appropriate manner. They require line of sight. So the odds that one of your historic structures will become a site are small and you have all of your zoning powers available to you to deal with it.
Okay, great. I know you're, you kind of set forth, don't bother talking about health, but I'm going to ask anyway. So are there, there aren't currently any studies available to tell us if there are health ramifications with, or we just aren't allowed to care?
Let me state that a little differently. I think we all care. But I would bet that each of us has a cell device in our pocket or our purse. What I can say with certainty is the FCC has preempted local regulation of the issue. Think of it this way, when the railroads, and this is a lot of FCC law, C law goes back to the railroad era, were going across country, you couldn't change the gauge of your track as you went from one county or city to another. Similarly, the cellphone, the government leases frequencies to the cell, cell companies, they use them, and cities are prohibited from regulating it. Now, to your, there are lots of studies. The FCC has done its own study and I'd be happy to provide you a copy of the 60-page guide for local officials that the FCC has put out. As noted, they're promoting As noted, they're promoters of the industry. I, as noted, I share your concern, but what I can say is that's not a proper subject for local regulation. That said, in the ordinance, there are several, what safeguards we can have are contained. Each permit is required to be certified by a radio frequency engineer, that the device operates within the guidelines provided by the FCC and the federal government. And there are provisions for the prompt removal of facilities that are damaged or fail to operate. That is as far as your authority would go. It's a narrow policy box.
Okay, thanks. I would just weigh in that I don't have a problem since, since you've already stated that this one request from Kim Allen about the 20-inch from face of pole and dimension doesn't work, I'm happy to make that change. I don't have any issues with that, so, thanks.
Councilmember Zornes?
Well, it's interesting that you brought up health because I went and Googled that and found American Cancer Society had quite a bit on it and I thought this was interesting, so I'll share it with you, is that there was a study on radiation. They don't think it's significant for humans, but for rats, it was very significant, but that was nine hours a day for two years and there was brain and adrenal tumors. But the funny component about it is, is that the rats live longer than regular rats. So I thought that was interesting. But they, but I did run, I did run across that the radio frequency is very strong on the forward part of the antenna, but on the back, it's hundreds of thousands of times weaker. So I thought that was helpful knowledge to have. I did have one question and since it was brought up here, is that, does public at some point have right to say, hey, can we have the radio frequency checked on this box? You know, is, will that, will that be something they have to do civilly or can they ask the city to check?
They can request review by the federal, they can file a complaint with the FCC.
Okay.
And you may have noticed that one of the requirements is that each of the box had can have a small and obtrusive plate that has a address for the owner of the facility and a number to call if individuals have concerns.
Like you would with the power company, pole number, whatever.
Yes. These are devices that would be put, we kept it as small as possible. The other, you mentioned health concerns. In the picture, I mentioned the shut-off, power shut-off. Those who work on the poles, the companies, the utility companies require a shut-off so that their linemen can work in and around the facilities.
Okay, so then another question, this is just coming out of, just blind ignorance here, is that for the pole, wear and tear, whether it's on a power pole or if it's on a city light, we have no, the only place that we can charge is in the permitting? We can't say, you know, you have to help pay for the paint? We can't do that or we can't?
You can charge any reasonable costs associated with both permitting and the maintenance and repair of the pole.
Okay, so and they would work that out with whoever, wherever they would put that?
I'll tell you, one place this comes up with some frequency is, I know you'd be surprised, but drivers run into utility poles. And particularly for decorative street lighting, that can be an expensive operation. So one of the things to look forward or at as we go forward are particularly for city-owned, your decorative light poles, make sure that you have an adequate number on your public works yard and that they're paid for by the company that uses.
Okay. This is another question that I meant to ask and didn't write it down. You were talking about that for, for communities that have put their, all their power underneath. Some of them are coming back and saying, we need more, we need more streetlights. Is that something that they could work with?
Yes.
Work out with these phone companies of creating a pole that provides a streetlight as well as small?
Yes, and this is a City of Seattle example from Soto. And this is also one, the more industrial version, gooseneck streetlights. These are both facilities that are specifically designed. You know, part of the process going forward would be to have a consideration, working with the carriers to come in and pull out their catalogs and show you what they have, their variety of concealment devices. I personally am not a fan of the Franken tree or the saguaro cactus. Don't necessarily fit in with our environment, but they have a lot of designs that are far less intrusive.
Okay, so a neighborhood might find it a, a nice trade-off.
You know, and it, what's, one thing that's really interesting, because, and I've been working with this, it's, talk about a short event horizon for about a year and a half, two years. At the, when we started, most of the focus was on high usage areas, downtowns, high school parking lots, you know, areas where the data was short. It's become increasingly clear, I'm, I have a bad DIY network habit and I, you know, and I'm watching and you see someone sitting, checking their home security system at the basketball game or, as mentioned, with most people, the majority of people now use cellphones in their homes. Or medical issue, and you've seen, you can check your refrigerator and find out what's in there when you're at the store. There are other uses that I think we'd all agree are probably more serious, allowing medical monitoring of pacemakers and other implanted devices. The reason I run through that list is those are all uses that are going to ensure that these facilities are deployed in residential neighborhoods. So undergrounded neighborhoods, if they're going to have the degree of technology that most people want these days, are going to have, we're going to have to find ways to accommodate deployments in residential neighborhoods.
Okay. And this, and this is my final question. This whole focus of what we're talking about is solely right-of-way usage, you know, putting in right-of-way?
That's the next question.
And on private properties, that's another conversation?
Excellent question. The primary focus is the public right-of-way. The reason that these provisions are in your zoning code is that the right-of-way at some point may fill up. There may be a need in certain areas for panel mounts or other devices. So for that reason, although initially it's a low probability, it's, most of the initial applications are going to be with regard to the right-of-way, they could be erected on private property. The reason I say low probability is if you're a businessperson and you've got the right to erect on a utility pole at a, at virtually no cost, do you want to erect your own tower and maintain it or pay a property owner for a lease? And the answer is probably not.
Right.
Someday in the future, we're trying to provide for the land use impact by making sure that the provisions are, aesthetic provisions are reviewed by your planning board.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember McAuliffe?
I do have a comment, mostly because I see that some of our property owners have put in a required, a project to put up the post in my area. And I particularly think it's important that, you know, the neighbors then get very concerned about the health, health issues and all of that. But I think, so to think the studies are really important so that we kind of follow what we see in the studies for health. But particularly, I think, I would want to comment on this as well. While I really support all of this, the installation of these cells at deployment, I want to stress also that if you are in an earthquake, if you are in a crisis point, you still need your landlines. I can see that whenever we've had power outages and all of these different things, people are without the use of their cellphones then and without the use of all this, this high-tech equipment. So I hope that we keep in mind that we still need our basic landlines in emergencies. I think it's important.
Councilmember Olson?
Yeah, I was kind of curious about the expected volume of applications that may come out of this, you know, if, are, you know, some, is the industry just kind of waiting for this to go through or is it kind of just like they're looking for opportunities or, I mean, is this already pre-planned and kind of a pounce kind of thing?
If, if the council's rules permitted, I'd like, that's, part of that question I'd like to defer to the carriers because they can tell you what their plans are. The publicly available information that I have access to, here's my favorite. 2016, the City of Seattle had seven small cell permit applications, or 2016, 2017, none. Last year, over 13,000. Now, the facilities are going to be, they're going to go in the high-density areas first, most bang for the buck and along the I-5 corridor, but you're obviously in that, that sweet spot, Bellevue, Redmond, yourselves, Issaquah, that will be getting attention. Would note that the deployment of small cells are, they're made on neutral engineering decisions. They're placed where they can get the best coverage, the best density for their network. How many and how far apart depend on the frequency that each carrier uses or is leased from the federal government. As I said, Mr. Mary, if it's appropriate, those are questions that I'd ask because I'm not an industry rep, I don't know what their plans are. They could give you a better idea of what coverage might require in terms of facilities in your community.
Any of you that are here as a rep for a wireless company willing to tell the others what your plans are for responsible wireless deployment? I didn't think so. It's okay. I get it. If you, if you want to, feel free.
Good evening, Greg Bush again. I can't speak specifically to the plans, but I can say that the way AT&amp;T chooses its sites is the engineers come up and say, all right, we have either a gap in coverage here or we have an anticipated increase in demand in this particular area. If it's population growth or if it's a high-traffic area, then the engineers say, all right, there's this red dot or however they choose to represent it on a map. And then that gets sent over to a site acquisition team and then the site acquisition team finds the best way to fill that dot, fill that need. And we're not waiting for timelines, we're not waiting to pounce. This is engineering needs that need to get met as the situation evolves. So our plans are based essentially on what we anticipate our future needs to be. And in Bothell, Bothell is, I know we have some plans, but again, these are constantly changing based on these simulations and they can change from week to week.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson, you have the floor.
Just one more question. So with the shot clock?
Sir, mind if I give you one more practical example?
Sure.
Public information. Normandy Park, a city whose environment, because of the slope to the sound, smaller than your community, but with coverage problems. Verizon's build out there was 18 sites. That's helpful.
And do the applications have numerous sites or is it one application per small cell?
Good question. FCC, in order to prevent cities from identifying a revenue source, provided for batching and approximately $270 per, per pole location as a presumptive safe amount. And they can batch all sites in one application.
All right. I mean, part of the reason I'm having these questions is I'm just imagining the, with the shorter shot clocks and everything, some of these applications going in and some of those timelines almost driving these to be more, I guess, expedient to be pushed ahead of other applications or jump in front of other work that the staff is reviewing because of these shorter timelines. So I was just kind of trying to feel out how that might happen and it sounds like by having batch applications, it could alleviate some of that problem that they can, there won't be 13,000 applications.
Yeah, but there will be a lot of sites in the, in the, in each application. Your question though brings to mind why we're going into the detail we are with the design elements. We're trying as much as possible to have this replicate a building permit application where it's a checklist and the staff is able to administratively go by, review the pole, identify the design elements, check the list. The application requirements require the carrier, if they've got a problem on a pole or a technological issue, to identify the deviation going in. So again, the desire here is to have this replicate and a building permit that is the most straightforward type of application for review.
All right. Thank you.
You're still good. Okay. So that's about all the comments we have from up here that I'm comfortable with. So if somebody makes a motion to amend section 1211, 130B2 with the, there isn't any language here to try to say from the dais, it just says, please change it.
Right, I think that under the, the current version, it's actually A2 and B8. Are you talking about the 20-inch limitation?
I'm just looking at the letter from Washington, it's from, it used to be council member, Kim Allen.
The 20-inch reference?
Yeah.
So what we could do is just simply strike those, the motion could be to simply strike those two provisions and renumber those sections and then we can address whether we need a larger extension in the permanent ordinance.
Do so, I don't know which section that we need to reference.
A2 and B8.
A2, you got that? You're probably making the motion. Okay. And then the other thing I wanted to look at is that, and it was mentioned a couple of times that it's an interim ordinance, but there's no such thing as an interim ordinance. There's interim regulations, is that correct? Ordinances don't actually just disappear, do they?
Under the Growth Management Act, this is similar to a moratoria. Anytime you amend the zoning code, you have public participation requirements, there are extensive, there's a process. Because of the timeline, you're asked to, again, waive your two readings, enact the interim ordinance, there will be a hearing, is required, a public hearing in addition with, well, you just had it.
It says about here.
But it will go to the Planning Commission for review and a recommendation that comes back to you. But the maximum life for an interim ordinance is six months unless you adopt a work plan to extend it.
Okay. And so I didn't really see that in the ordinance itself that says that the code would actually change back on the six-month basis, is that?
Operation of state law. And believe me, we'll be back because the city's aesthetic requirements should be in place under the FCC order by April 14th. You will have some in effect, but they may need to be changed or revised.
Okay. Okay, those are, those are my questions. So is there a motion? Deputy Mayor?
I move that council approve the proposed ordinance as amended to strike the two provisions, is it 12.7, .11, .170, A2B? 130.
130.
So 12 dot 11, 130, A2 and B. Strike those two provisions and reorder the numbers.
A second. Oh, there we go. Move by Deputy Mayor Segal and by Councilmember Agnew to adopt the ordinance with the amendments as stated by the deputy mayor. Is there a discussion on the motion? Seeing none, place your vote.
And just to be clear, that's sections A2 and B8, is that correct, Deputy Mayor?
You're the one that told her.
I'm just clarifying.
I just had A2B written down.
A2 and the two.
B8.
The two sections are A2 and B8.
Okay. Is A2? Okay, it's A2, B8.
And we have a motion on the floor. All right, any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, place your vote. Passes unanimously with Councilmember McNeil, absent and excused. And we are on to, my computer locked up, it's fun. New business, AB 19-033, 2019 human services grant recommendations, and this plan for the 2020 program. And wow, you are the show tonight, Assistant City Manager.
Just wait till the item after me. So the next item for you this evening, good evening again, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the City Council. This item is a proposal from your own, so this is a proposal from the city's Human Services Committee, which is Deputy Mayor Dewar, Councilmember McNeil, and then Councilmember McAuliffe, were appointed by the new council when it took office to serve on the city's Human Services Committee, and Councilmember Agnew is our alternate. The, the committee in previous years has proposed a two-year distribution of grants, and let me back up. In the general fund, during your biennial budget process, you have allocated a set amount per person in Bothell to be given to human services organizations to meet the needs of people in Bothell and the surrounding area. Previously, these have been distributed as a two-year grant program, so the same grants have been given to grantees and programs, the same amount for two years in a row, and then it's reassessed going into the next budget cycle. This year, the committee has proposed to do something a little bit different. So the committee is proposing a plan for the 2019 grants that you see as an attachment to your agenda bill today. And then reassessment of the program and work to do some improvements to it, to perhaps redesign a program that right now is done through a regional process, a pooled application, into something that's a little more tailored for Bothell itself. Hearing the interest from the community and from the council in getting better accountability, better oversight, better metrics, and a better assessment of the impact of this money on Bothell residents, the committee would be looking at reassessing and redesigning that program in 2019, and then moving forward with a different type of program in 2020. So this is a transitional plan. The proposal for the 2019 grants, these would be one-year grants paid for out of the approved budget for the coming year, and this would be grants totaling $342,760, given to 29 grantees across 46 programs. The discussions and the summary of the committee discussion is included in your agenda bill, and I'd be happy to take questions.
Questions? Or comments, sir? Any comments, Councilmember Olson?
Real quick, one is, I have a, a, a place in my heart for Sophia's Way, so I really love seeing that as part of our groups that we're working with. They, my threshold is, are we empowering people and not enabling people? And they just do a great job, so I think that we can foster some agencies like Sophia's Way that are doing that is, is great to see. My, my only other question out of kind of my firstborn busybody curiosity is, I would love to see a list of the pooled programs at some point, if it's salient for the, if it's, if it's not in, as we transition into our new way of allocating money, but if we're still using them, I would like to see who, who Bellevue were allowing them to decide how money is allocated, if I understand what was written here. I don't understand what was written here. Okay, I just, I just read something here that, that Bellevue has, what was it? 21 of the 44 funded programs in the pool program, they oversee it, so maybe someone could elaborate on that.
I'd be happy to clarify that.
Thank you.
And I apologize for any lack of clarity on that. The decisions by the committee are about which grantees and programs get which amount of money. So the funding decisions are made entirely by the committee. The distribution of those funds and the administration, for, those are grantees that are funded by multiple cities. So when multiple cities all decide to fund someone like Hope Link, that contract is then held by Bellevue, and I, I see Ms. Jansen is here, so as soon as I mess something up, please let me know. That contract is held by Bellevue. So Bellevue, that grantee has one relationship, which is with Bellevue, and then Bellevue will get their metrics, they will, they will get the information, they will send out the invoices, they will reimburse them. So the contractual administration is only through Bellevue, but the decisions as to who gets, who gets which funding and which programs get funding are done by the committee.
Question. So as money is, as Bellevue is overseeing that, do they give feedback to the cities on how the money is allocated in, for these different agencies and how they use them, so that we know?
The, the metrics are collected from the pooled agencies as well. So when they submit for reimbursement to Bellevue, they also will report how many Bothell residents were served.
Oh, perfect, that's, that's what I was wanting to know, was, was, you know, are we just handing the money and then it just goes off, or do we get feedback on where that money is used? So thank you.
If I may, it's to the degree that we do get feedback, and that has been some of the robust discussion in the committee, was that this collective regional process is a little easier on the grantees, but it sometimes has some limitations on providing specific feedback for Bothell itself. So the, we do get some metrics back, which is good, and they will report it by city, but we have some limitations as to how much oversight or additional questions we can ask under the current process, and that would be the, the assessment this year, is to see if there's other ways that we could relate to the grantees that might give us a little more information for Bothell.
Councilmember McAuliffe?
So you really did cover very well what our concern was and why we actually went to one year. And that was because we didn't feel that we were getting enough reports about who are we serving and are they the people and our citizens in Bothell that are being served? So that's really the reason we kind of went to one year, so we could get a better idea of who is receiving these funds. This is a really important service to the people in our community. There are some, I mean, while I know Councilwoman Zorn, you appreciate, Sophia's, there are many of these programs that serve our development and disabled, our early learners, our senior citizens. We are really wanting to know, are we serving the people in Bothell? And if we are, let's put more support into those programs that serve our people and our low-income people as well. So we hope through 2019, we will get a very, better handle on how we really want to distribute these dollars. It's really important, because it serves people who are the neediest, and so I, I want to support the work of this committee. We met three or four times and really felt like this was a good direction to go. The other thing I'd like to comment is that we do have some dollars left over that are still kind of in reserve. And I think that's important, because one of my goals, this is my goal, would be that we would be, the bill that will be moving to the legislature, that would allow municipalities to do scholarship programs, maybe we would be able to invest in scholarships for some of our students in our own community. And so we're hoping, and I've got this little reserve in the back of my head, that we will be able to invest in some of our young people and provide scholarships for them. So we hope that the legislature will consider that.
Deputy Mayor?
So I would just weigh in, this is kind of an interim solution. So time was getting short, it's difficult, because we were trying to weigh, have we hit all the categories? Have we hit homelessness? Have we hit seniors? I can't remember the numbers, but I think we spend more on seniors than any other category by far. And so trying, and some of them cover more than one category, and so what we decided to do, knowing that we were going to try to become more Bothell-focused in these grants, is we kept the grant amounts basically as they were the last period, and then any additional money, we spread out amongst Bothell-specific grantees. And so that's where we put all of the additional money that kind of, from, you know, growth of number of residents. And so I feel pretty happy with where we ended up, given the time constraints, but our, our big concern going forward is, how do we, how do we wrangle this a little bit better, so we know that we're making a bigger difference to our community? And so we, I think I've talked about this before in committee reports, but we're looking at potentially having our own grant application, or hiring Seattle Foundation to research for us better metrics for how successfully our money's being used, so.
You good?
Yeah.
So, so, there's two, two things I'd like to say. One of them is, I think this is a super important thing that the city does fund. I think everybody, all the citizens here should feel good about that, the, each, each person, it was 11 bucks per person, so you don't get to write that off in your taxes at the end of the year, but just keep that in mind, that the city did take, take that amount of money and invested into human services. And I don't think it's cities or local governments' job to literally build, you know, beds and hospitals and nursing facilities and that type of stuff, but it is okay for us to actually contribute to those, especially if we can do it on a regional basis. The, the thing I struggle with, so we, I think it was part of the budget process, where we asked to have Arch come in and explain to us what was going on, based on the, the news media about, and it was $100,000 that was in our budget that we were, you know, calling out and questioning, saying, hey, there's no accountability for this, we want to know, we would like to see some accountability before we just write the check. This is $342,760 across 29 different grantees and 46 programs. And I've talked to the city manager about this, and, you know, I said, well, do we really have the staff power to go back and check with all 29 grantees across 46 programs to see if that money's actually being used and we can be accountable? Can I, can we, can we say, stand up in front of a camera and say, yep, we're good, we know every last one of those dollars actually went to a human service? And I don't think we're there. I don't know if you want to chime in, come back to your mic, you got it, okay. And I'm, the mic cleared, be okay, I just want to make sure I'm not putting words in your mouth. So I, I do have a lot of concern, I like that the committee kind of self-said, like, hey, maybe we should look at doing this a better way. It's always been somewhat of a concern, and I know it's been a struggle for the executive office to handle just administering this, the, the checks and the grants agreements and that type of thing. But then add the actual, like, hey, let's make sure we get our money's worth out of it, is a whole nother layer of stuff, and there are regional programs that we can just put our money into the system and then get those metrics out of it, as well as the services to our community. So I'm glad we did it just for this year and that we're looking at it for the coming years, and I don't know if those regional organizations have like a committee of elected officials that help them choose, which makes the most sense, but maybe in the future, we look at not even having a human services committee in this, in, of council members, but that's just me kind of spitballing it. I've been on the human services committee, and I just kind of felt like I got ran over by a truck, because there was just so much information, and it was just kind of like, oh, okay, we gave them money last year, it was kind of like the punchline, just made me uncomfortable. So, but I support this, and I, I look forward to hearing about kind of plans to try to tighten up the accountability in 2020. So, is there a motion?
I would so move that we adopt the recommendations by the Human Service Committee, the grant recommendations.
Moved by Councilmember McAuliffe, seconded by Deputy Mayor, to approve the Human Services Committee recommendation for the city of Bothell 2019 human services grants. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, go ahead, place your vote. Passes unanimously with Councilmember McNeil, absent and excused. You okay? All right, good. So we have one more item, but we're thinking to take a break before that? Come again? Oh, that's right, we need to take a break, so we can rearrange the furniture, okay. How much time, maybe 15 minutes, rearrange furniture? We got a moving crew? All right, so we'll be back, let's just make it 7:45, or recess.